Folks, I have seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call and order this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of White Lake. And at this time, I would ask that you bear your heads for the invitation. Your order wish. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be able to gather here this evening to discuss business of our town. We would ask that you guide and direct us as we tend to do your will and to do those things that are in the best interest of the citizens of this town. These things we ask in price name. Amen. At this time, all of you are welcome to join in. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would add Commissioner Suggs to team with Lisa and the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance, issued by the United States of America. To the Republic, for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well.
All right, just for your informational purposes, Paul Evans is on vacation, will not be able to meet with us tonight, and we wish him well in his travels. And he didn't hear yet, but he's usually late. He's a busy man, but we're not, we're not gonna hold out against him. All right, at this time, we'll start off our meeting with our usual agenda consent items. Are there any questions for staff in regard to any of the items appearing under the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Next matter is our presentation that we have from White Lake Friends Incorporated. I think this Alice Warren is doing that. Alice, if you want to step up and address the board, we'll be glad to hear from you at this time.
Letting us come to you tonight. Definitely want to get me on record. We have, a lot of our friends are here in the audience tonight that actually started us on this effort. And we are introducing you tonight to White Lake Friends, Inc. And Sean, can I ask you just to advance the status again? So to go back and talk just a little bit about our history. We gathered in the late summer of twenty three to discuss creating this formal group. It was a wide variety of individuals representing a very diverse group of past employment. Many of us are retirees, some are semi-retired, we're from all walks of life, legal, financial, educational, conservationist. Administrators, we represent a very diverse body, but what unites us is our love for White Lake and having spent so much of our lives at White Lake. And now we've created additional legacies of our children, grandchildren, and others continuing our presence in this wonderful community. Many of us live year-round, and then, like in my case, White Lake is a second home. But here again, it's the love of the lake that brings us back. So Sean, next slide. So we came up with initial goals, and like any group trying to get off the ground, you start running into a whole laundry list of what you can do, how we should organize, what we should do to operate. We're very much into the thought of educating and conserving our resources and helping others understand what kind of flowers or floral we have around, what kind of animals we have around, to develop a greater appreciation when they come here to be at White Lake. Those who were guests and those like us who still continue to come back, things do change. Then we, as an organized group, if we can apply for grants where we could put those monies back into practice and initiatives that would benefit the lake, working hopefully with the town and any other groups in this area, we would be willing to pursue those grant monies and help manage those monies to further that mission of educating and conserving and protecting. We very much would like to partner with the Town of Lake on jointly chosen missions and projects. For example, I know there's a group that leads the lake cleanup activity, but we would like as a new nonprofit or non-for-profit get involved more with that, and perhaps we could partner with the town to make that an even bigger and better event, because obviously it's not going anywhere, and it continues to take care of the lake and the surrounding areas. And it shows we're here to stay. Next slide. So our first steps then were to create a vision, mission statements. We formed a smaller steering committee of those who gathered initially just keep pushing the envelope and keep the development of this organization. We chose a name, White Lake Friends, Inc. Simple, easy to remember, and definitely connected to what it is we are so much in love with. We chose a registered agent from our group to represent us for mail, emails, other things, just to kind of keep us organized and to represent us well. We created an articles of incorporation, and we have applied for a not-for-profit status with the state of North Carolina. Next slide, please. So where we are now, I'll let you know, this is a world, and I feel like we're sort of sitting right in the middle of this world. Because there's a whole lot left to do. We, as a group, know that, but we can sit back and look at how far we have come just in one year's time. So it's now our mission to continue to organize all of these items and to continue to push the envelope and get more and more of these items off our checklists. Next slide, please. So we want to celebrate our current successes, and in part because that keeps us motivated to keep working on this. We have succeeded in becoming a not-for-profit corporation with the state. The steering committee has approved our mission, vision statement, and we've got a draft of bylaws. We're in the process of receiving a 501(c)(3) status. And we have scheduled our first general membership meeting. I believe the date I saw it last night was July the tenth at seven o'clock. We will be meeting on what I call the fifty-three side of the lake at Kathy Kenlaw's home, former home, above the side of the lake. And we'll be getting ourselves more and more organized. And at that meeting, we'll tackle things like who will our officers be? What will our committees be? Who will serve on those committees? What will be the mission of any of those committees? When will we start our membership recruitment? And what kind of dues do we think we may want to put in place? Next slide. So for right now, our, we want, we want to experience some successes pretty quickly. Part of that's just to keep us all motivated and excited. So we've set a target goal of fifty members. If we could get fifty to join us, wouldn't that be a great number of folks from all walks of life who have a different level of history and memories of White Lake to be with us and to be part of White Lake Friends? We want to create a history of anthology of White Lake. Create a natural history record of White Lake and the Bay Area. We want to work on finding a museum-type space for photographs and history, and I'll go ahead and throw it out there for what it's worth, because you all can obviously say no, or maybe not right now. But the building next door, the house that I think is over there, that used to be a medical location, and now there's another one down the road. If we could figure out a way to get that space would be a perfect place for us to put up our history, to have other information about White Lake, how we fit within the Bay Area. And it would also be a great place for us to try to host a camp that we think could be one of the first things, another first thing that we would try to do is to have a camp for children. Our children, yes, that come here to the lake for the week, and they want to send their kids somewhere for a little while every day, we would love to have. And we give us an opportunity to create that, create that education, showcase our history, and just to talk about our area. So we could partner with that. Maybe you all could let us rent it from you for maybe a dollar a year, something. I'm thinking, like I said, the only thing you can do is give me nothing. But we're working on that. We would like to have a space that we could call our home. Next slide. So obviously, these are some of the pictures that you folks will see all the time around here, and we all love these moments of reflecting on just nature as it is with this beautiful body of water. Next slide. Here are other flowers, birds, critters, fish. And I tell you what, those fishermen on Thursday night, they sure get aggressive when they're after those big fish. They come right up between the piers. They're almost on our, or at our seawall, and I walk out there to look and see what are they fishing for? I've never seen a fish big enough run around the shore there that I would even want to hook, but there must be something. And I don't know about you all, but the gardenia bushes in our yard right now, it's like being in the perfume section of a department store. They're fabulous right now. Next slide. And to go back with just a little bit of our history, we all have photographs from a long time ago. But what I found interesting in looking at these pictures again were the types of hats or coverings that the folks wore in the picture on the far left on the bottom. They look more like from here, Sunday School hats that the women would have worn back then. But if that's all you had, you needed protection, you wore what you had. The other thing is I like the looks of the boats, especially the sailboats on the right. And I guess you could call that boat in the middle on the bottom row a possible canoe. But here again, just seeing how folks back in those early, early, early days of White Lake were already enjoying it in their own way. Now, if these folks that are in these photographs were living right now and could see some of the boats, the shapes, the colors, the things our kids and we have all steed on, ridden on, done shows with, I think they would be truly amazed. So a little history is always important for us to know. And the very last slide is will you partner with us on this exciting adventure? And we, as a smaller subset, really felt it was important to tell us to you all that we are official, we are here to stay, we're not, you know, the night show, we're gonna be here for the long runs. This is not our first time at being at a rodeo and trying to get something like this up and running. We are gonna have our challenges, we realize that, but we know that if we can work together and partner together, not only with you all as a larger entity, but any other groups in the area, that we will all succeed and enrich the life that we know of coming from White Lake, we would be thrilled. The roads, would you accept the roads? You all know that comes from Bachelor Nation. And we know that some of those relationships have worked, and some of them haven't worked. But we have high expectations that our roads and us working together will work. And our last slide is local contact information. Susan Holland, who is in the audience tonight on the back row, or Kathy Kenlaw, sitting on the other side of the aisle. They are here all the time and would certainly be willing to field questions or offer help if any of you have questions or need help in the future. So thank you for letting us come tonight and tell us about us, or telling you about us. Because we're excited and we're looking forward to working with you and having you all be in our membership as well. So thank you. Do you have questions, anybody?
Probably don't know enough to ask questions right at this point.
Well, that's probably true.
But guys, we're always glad to have folks that come in and join with us in promoting White Lake, and, you know, all of us certainly have a a very common interest in, in having a love of White Lake. And I've known you from being down here for a long time. I've been here all my life. And, and we will certainly be glad to look to see what we might be able to, to do with y'all. And I have in mind a number of contacts that I'll be glad to provide to your folks that I think might be beneficial in, in providing some help. And we'll, we'll look forward to certainly hearing back from.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you again. It's a little tricky sometimes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again. All right, next item on the agenda is our public hearing for our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Town of White Lake budget. Does anybody sign it? At this time, I'm going to open the hearing. It is our policy, we have a sign-up sheet, and we need to sign up in order prior to the start of the meeting to speak. It's my understanding there's no one signed up to speak or provide comments at the public hearing. So there being no comments to be received, we will close the public hearing at this time. Next on the agenda is our administrative matters, and Sean, I'll let you present the administrative matters under audio management.
Okay. For the first report here, this is Dr. Diane Lawrence's White Lake Lake Water Management Project Update. In this update, Diane did want me to pass the board her apologies for her monthly report being a little delayed this month. I understand she has some technicalities on the computer side when she was working on her report, but she did say and want to pass on the update that you see in front of you. She said that the report will be posted online as the other reports are. And in this report this month, she mentioned that there was little rain in May, and the lake level has dropped about three inches over the course of the month, which is typical for this time of the year at the lake. The clarity of the lake, however, as she measured by her secu-disc was in the central portions of the lake at least eight feet, which is a large change from April, and the best clarity that she has noted since the year two thousand and nineteen. She says chlorophyll level A's or chlorophyll A levels, which are measured the living bite of plankton in the water, are also low, and a clue up to what was measured in May of two thousand and twenty-three. Also typical for this time of year is the difference between what the eastern shore looks like and what the southwestern shore looks like as the boating activity does this large smudge and vegetation, which washes the shore in the shallow areas, typically with the way the wind is blowing across the lake. If there are no questions, Mayor, that's the update from Dr. Diane Larson for this month. For the White Lake Water AIA project update, it's provided in the monthly packet. This project continues to progress well during the month of May for two thousand and twenty-four. The map books were completed, which are a pretty big quality-of-life update for Public Works. This allows them, it gives them another resource really in the field to be able to locate where our infrastructure is, in addition to GIS, which they have on their electronic devices. The map books are, are the, what some might say, the old-timey way of doing it, but they're maps that they can have that are printed out, that they can make changes to and, and highlight as, as they're working with the system in different parts of the lake. We've also coordinated with subcontractor to continue hydraulic model creation, and we presented hydrant pressure recorder data to the town, or they have, I should say, which, which was very interesting. I think Public Works Department, as well as Town Administration, will keep a close eye on that, as it's gonna really shape the end product for our town in terms of our capital improvement plan and the list of priority for the projects that you see listed when that plan is ready to present to the board later on this year, first of next year. So moving forward into June of two thousand and twenty-four.
Can I ask you? I mean, I don't have my glasses. I can't see. Because there's something in here. I can't read about there. And there's an update under that, that one.
No, so that is not.
Okay, I already have something under my packet.
It's under Diane's report.
Yeah, it's not on the AI. Was that Diane's report?
It was mentioned in the Town Administration report.
Yeah, you'll get to it. You'll update it. Okay, okay. I know I read somewhere, I rang up on last night.
Sure. Getting back to the Water AIA project, just briefly, the Williams Ravendale Engineering Firm plans to collect SCADA data, which is data that's on our system for the water. They prepared the final GIS deliverables, and they start developing their hydraulic model, which was referenced in the update for May of two thousand and twenty-four. This sounds complicated, but again, it's, it's routine for this type of project and is geared at presenting the board a capital improvement project for our water system to make improvements to efficiency and effectiveness moving forward. Mayor, if there's no questions on the Water AIA project, that's the update for this month.
All right, if you will proceed to the Lumber of Council of Government Strategic Plan.
All right, the Lumber of Council of Government Strategic Plan update was received from David Richardson with Lumber River Council of Governments, and I believe it was a month or two ago, the board requested that I look into what it would be in terms of a planning discussion with the board and for future goals and basically a best way to move forward type of practice. And this is done in two ways, really. The first way, it's done in, in part through the budget planning process. Of course, every budget does reflect goals of, of the board collectively. But the second way would be to, to start with Lumber Council of Government providing a half-day retreat at a time and date set by the board. Certainly, if the board be interested in that, we can, I'll be more than happy to facilitate what those, what best date works for the board, but based on the half-day retreat and the availability of what the current projects look like, the best time for Lumber Council of Governments to do this would be moving forward after July. So in other words, it'd be our new fiscal year as we prepare for the next fiscal year in twenty-five, twenty-six. Some of the questions that would be proposed in a retreat like this would be what do you want to accomplish as a board? What are your goals for White Lake in the short term, medium term, long term? And other general related questions like this that are geared at starting a conversation, move discussion forward. There also is a plan, if the board were to pursue it, after that half-day retreat, where the Lumber Council of Governments would do a series of strategic planning workshops taking place over the course of the calendar year. And of course, this would be a much more detailed conversation with the cost that'd be incurred to the town at a proposal provided by Lumber Council of Governments following that half-day retreat. So essentially, if, for the update, if the board be interested in, in scheduling a retreat like this, as Town Administrator, I'm more than happy to, again, facilitate that and, and propose some dates and times that the board could review for your schedule in terms of when we could schedule a meeting like that. That's all I have for that.
Next item on our agenda.
Will we decide about this before we go on?
Do what?
Will we decide about this before we go on?
Decide what? What, what do you, I, I don't know what you asked. Decide what?
He said we could choose between a half-day retreat or a one- to two-year process.
Right, but we'll, we'll do the half-day retreat first, is what he was saying. And once we do that, then, and that's done at no cost to us, as it states in there, there's no cost. We would do that first, and then we wouldn't make a decision on the other until we did the half-day retreat, and then they said they'd be willing to work with us to set that up.
The way he explained it to me, it was an either or.
I apologize, that might not have been clear. It, it's a half-day thing first. That's the reason I just didn't understand what you were asking.
That's what David explained it to, that we could choose half-day or the one or two-year. And since we have data from citizens from the lake management and the twenty-year plan.
The conference of plan.
Yeah, I feel that the half-day is best papers to go.
Okay.
And that's what we start off with, is he said they, they're willing to schedule something after July. So we'll, we're gonna get dates and times from them when they're available, we'll come in and present that to the board, and then we go forward.
Yeah.
All right, next is, again, the resolutions and ordinances under number five. First is the adoption of the Budget Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty-four dash seventeen for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. There were no comments at the public hearing. Sean, if you will present that for us.
Yes, sir. The budget ordinance is presented in the packet. The budget ordinance is the budget vehicle document, if you will, for the budget retreat that we had. The budget that, as it was proposed to the board, has not changed. The town staff has not received any comments or any type of feedback on the board. It was posted online to our website, as well as the public hearing tonight was advertised both online and in the newspaper for local media circulation. That's done to adhere to general statute. So having said that, I will say that, just some brief highlights, the tax rate remains at twenty-seven cent. I want to commend the, the board. I also want to commend town staff. I think that collectively from an administrator role, the town has done a phenomenal job of doing a lot with less. And by that, I mean, most other municipalities in the southeast North Carolina region, including Elizabeth Town, including Fayetteville, including Wilmington, including Leland, including Whiteville, Carolina Beach, various others, have all seen increases in their tax, their abdolment tax rate this year. I think it's, I think it's a good job, both by the board and staff, working collectively together to maintain our tax rate of twenty-seven cent and continue to be able to offer services at, at the level that we do to our, to our citizens with that tax rate. I would also say that the, just to bring to your attention and remind the board, it does not include any type of water, excuse me, any type of wastewater increase on the utility side. It does include a five percent increase on the water side. But having said that, budget ordinance is there in your packet for you to review. Again, there's no changes, and staff would ask that the board approve the budget ordinance amendment two thousand and twenty-four dash seventeen as presented.
Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. One other thing I wanted to mention on that, since we, we've adopted it, as you know, we have very recently, and I just want to commend staff again on, we were in the same situation as numerous other towns. And part of it due to things that happened during COVID, part of it due to some, some other things that came up. But, you know, we recently caught up all of our audits, and we are up to date with it, our staff, and Mary Jo and Amber have worked very hard on that. Was in the news this evening that the, the state apparently is going to be withholding sales tax revenues from towns who are not up to date with their audits at this time. Unfortunately, we are. They had on the news this evening that Columbus County, Bladenboro, East Arcadia, Tabor City, and Bergoff were all going to have sales tax. Hell, they'll receive it eventually, assuming they get their audits called in. But just wanted to let you know again how diligently staff has been working and how we are up to date with that at this point. And so if you think about it, say a good word to them. They've, they've done a lot of hard work on this, and we have everything up to date at this point. All right. Next matter on this will be our other budget ordinance amendments that we always have at the end of the fiscal year, is that, as you know, we're on a fiscal year that's July one through June thirtieth. Our fiscal year will end at the end of this month, and we are making budget amendments to provide adjustments in the budget for all of the purposes. And Sean, if you will take those, we will need to take action on each one of those individually, and there are several of them.
Yes, sir. Item B is Budget Ordinance Amendment two thousand and twenty-four dash eighteen. It is in the street department for four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. This is to account for the sale of a Public Works truck. I believe it was a nineteen ninety-five Chevrolet dump truck. You see it listed in your packet as eleven ninety-five, which means nineteen ninety-five. This asset was sold, and this accounts for the revenues as well as the, well, there'd be no expenditures for this. This is just the revenue, so if there are no questions. well, there'd be no expenditures for this. This is just the revenue. So if there are no questions, staff would ask that board approve the budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash seventeen as presented.
Have a motion.
Let me.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash nineteen is in the administration of fire department for three hundred and eighty five dollars, and this just accounts for two administration payments that were received that were unbudgeted. Uh one from the office of state fire marshal, one from the North Carolina associate of municipal clerks for a duplicate invoice. If there are no questions, staff would ask the board approve twenty twenty four dash eighteen as presented.
So may.
Motion second. Any discussion? None. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item D.
Item D is Budget Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty in the police department for fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. This accounts for the excess interest that we received on our investment accounts. We did use that or some of that, the interest you see there, fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to pay off the remaining balance owed to First Bank on one of the two thousand twenty two Ford Explorers I was recently purchased as a police vehicle. If there are no questions, staff would ask that board approve budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash nineteen as presented.
So may.
Motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item E.
Item E is Budget Works Amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty one. This is also in the police department for sixty six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. This is the cost of a new police truck that was budgeted in the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget. That vehicle was ordered, but we did not receive delivery and therefore will need to carry it into the next budget year. This budget amendment accounts for that. If there are no questions, staff would ask that the board approve budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty as presented.
So may.
Motion second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item E.
Budget ordinance amendment, uh sorry, running a little behind on my agenda here. Budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty two is in the fire department for one thousand five hundred dollars. This is to account for the budgeted expense that the uh town staff budgeted in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four for a grant from the forestry service. Unfortunately, the fire department did not receive that grant and this budget amendment just retracts that expense from the uh budget. If there are no questions, staff would ask that the board approve budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty one as presented.
So may.
So. Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Item G.
Item G is Budget Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty two. Excuse me, dash twenty three in the water department for three thousand seven hundred and eighty eight dollars. This is to account for meters that were purchased. In a situation like this, the the town will purchase the meters, the customer will then reimburse the town for the cost of those meters. And this budget amendment accounts for the revenue and the expense of that equation. If there are no questions, staff would ask that the board adopt uh excuse me, approve budget order in twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty three as presented.
So may. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item H.
Item H is Budget Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty four and also in the water department for thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty six dollars. These are water department expenditures. You'll see them listed. Uh they were all purchased with surplus interest. This interest again being all from the investment accounts the town participates in. Uh these expenditures include the Pollock Works Building that was approved last month, a pole barn that was approved last month, tools for water sampling and a handheld meter reader. So this is the uh corresponding budget amendment for the expenditures that were approved last month in the water department. If there are no questions, staff would ask that the board approve budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty four as presented.
So may.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Uh next is item.
Item I is the Budget Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty five in the wastewater department for forty six thousand five hundred dollars. These are the same expenditures that were listed in the water department previously, but they do, it does add a pump, a dry, dry, excuse me, a dry prime pump uh with attachments to that expenditure. That's why you see it a little bit higher than the last one. Uh these expenditures were paid for with increased interest from our investment accounts as previously stated, and this was also accepted and approved by the board last month's meeting. This is just the budget ordinance amendment that account for those expenditures. If the uh no questions, staff would ask that the board approve budget ordinance amendment twenty twenty four dash twenty five as presented.
So may.
Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item six, uh it uh first item is our departmental briefings and reports. As uh always, we present those uh to you uh and they're uh available for inspection by the by the public as they are, public records. Glad to provide those at any time. Uh.
And mayor, if I may just make a comment to Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Block's uh response earlier, in the town administration report, there was listed that the we are working with Larry Kingham Associates on a proposal for a project that would enhance and in some ways repair the two inlets that are located on White Lake Drive. Their inlets, for lack of a better term, you could also call them, I guess, outlets that feed water into the lake. Uh they're both located on DOT drainage uh culverts. Uh again, they're on White Lake Drive and I anticipate bringing that information to the board in a future meeting uh with a proposal from from their firm uh for that work. That's all.
That's a pretty big deal. Now, it just kind of blow by that.
All right, item B is the July fourth uh holiday schedule. As usual, we'll have a be closed on Thursday, July fourth. We'll have an on-call person available in case of any water sewer emergencies. On the fourth of July, the fireworks will be on Thursday, July fourth, twenty twenty four, at the Grand Regal at Goldston's Beach when the sun sets, or as we used to say down here, at dark thirty. Uh and that's when we usually start. Uh.
I would like to add a comment to that. I think it's important for everyone to understand uh with all the transition the chamber is doing um how important the White Lake Water Festival Committee uh has been towards getting the fireworks handled. Uh we were able to uh have ample funds left over from this year's water festival uh that we'll be able to pull from. Of course, we're still taking sponsors uh sponsorship for the fireworks from, you know, private businesses, individuals, anybody that wants to contribute, but uh that really set us up for success on how well the water festival was run this year. So just wanted to make that note.
Thank you for the comment, Jay. And I hope all of you will be able to join in for the for fireworks. Uh item D is Bladen Community College ribbon cutting invitation. Board is invited to attend a ribbon cutting at Bladen Community College for the Colonel George Resigie Building, and that's June twentieth uh twenty twenty four at eleven A M. Item E is the state inspection results on the White Lake Sewer Sanitary System. On May seventh, twenty twenty four, the state conducted their routine inspection of the uh sewer sanitary system and found the system to be in excellent condition and well maintained. Uh and item F uh wanted to announce that we did receive a grant in the White Lake Fire Department this year. The Office of State Fire Marshal has awarded White Lake Fire Department twenty four thousand fifteen dollars for new equipment. That grant requires a fifty fifty match and we have in our budget a uh submission sufficient amount to uh be able to match that grant. And we have received here in the town of White Lake uh a total of almost three hundred thousand dollars uh from the volunteer fire department funds that's probably began in nineteen eighty eight. And of course, it's been uh very helpful in uh continuing to allow us to have uh uh new and updated equipment for our volunteer firefighters and we certainly want to look after their uh their safety and what they do and they they provide a uh a really special service to the town and uh just some of you who may be in the audience may not be aware, we are are rare these days in our volunteer fire department as compared to a lot of other towns. We have over thirty members of forty now volunteer fire department. And I think close to thirty of those members are certified as first responders.
Yes, sir.
And uh uh Dale Brennan, our our chief, does an excellent job uh on that. Uh and again, uh while Kevin Taylor's here, our public works director, Kevin, again, uh good job on the inspection with the system and and uh glad that that was found to be in good shape and we appreciate that. Uh. And uh the uh last matter is the White Lake uh Police Department Lexapro Gold Award and they they have awarded White Lake Police Department a gold award in recognition of the tax department's excellence in law enforcement policy management for the year twenty twenty three. And again, our chief is here tonight, uh Bruce. Again, congratulations on that and and appreciate all the the efforts that y'all put forth as you may or may not be aware, we've added a setup member to our our uh police department. I think we're basically up to full strength now and and that's a good thing because we've got summer beginning uh and and we are uh continuing to fill the slots that we need and and uh and and provide uh the police services that are needed in this uh community. Uh at at this time, we're at our open.
Imagine on this issues. Something I won't say.
Okay, okay.
Um. I would say, hey, I was saying, I don't know if you remember me, uh you remember Frankie, actually, Tammy, I married Tammy. And uh you 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 said something that I want to share and I'm getting a lot of feedback in this reference to the fish. And God bless them fishermen, hope they catch all the fish and take them off the line. But um I've got somebody in the audience tell him to share with me, they're going to their uh volleyball net where their kids swim and they're finding hooks and all kind of paraphrasing the neighbor. He's got pictures of all the hooks he's found, showing me where the kids swim. Got another neighbor in a turtle cove, his daughter's in bathing suit, reading her book on Chapel Hill, and she has to go in and, you know, they were back in between the piers and they said, how about this little respect? And I realize sometimes we buy a permit, we pay for this pier and we pay these property taxes. So I think we take a little price, you know, a little sharing of responsibility. You know, those boats go parallel to the pier. I believe I almost got a ticket going parallel to the pier. We had to go straight in and straight out. Going up sailboats, go straight in, straight out. These fishing going all around the lake going in between the piers. I see people flotation device. Uh I think there are some limitations. We do have some rights. And I would like to propose like to the commissioners and Sean, if we can meet with some of the wildlife folks. The I'm not saying we're against the fishermen, but I mean, they they gotta work with us as well and especially White Lake is known as a as a destination for swimming and boating. And uh and 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 this needs to be shared, especially this time of the year when kids swim and I my pier's being caught, my boat's being caught, and I saw uh y'all share stories. So I think we need to have addresses. Uh I think it'd be good for everybody.
It is a a permit that you can get to mark off a swim area between your pier and the next.
Yeah. Um I've done that, you know, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think it's probably good that the town write a letter just to whoever's in charge of it and just say, you know, take consideration for others if you're in out Goldston's Beach, can't can't bear water and kids are out swimming, are not the best place to fish. You know, just common courtesy.
Yeah, I I I agree. I I think the folks that put it on need to instruct their people that are participating a little better. I had to go out on my here just a couple of weeks ago when they were doing that and I was sitting out on front porch and somebody had had their their hook they got going on on my pier. And I looked out there and there they are. Doc decided he got up on my pier and I went out and had a chat with him and told him my grandkids swim out there and if uh if they continue to do that with my pier, they were gonna have a real problem. Uh and 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 it is a safety concern and and they 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 don't seem some time to be very conscious of of what they're doing in that regard and and we uh I I I agree we can do that and I'll get Sean to to contact him later. I think that would be a good idea. Okay, any anything else? Not with open forum session. It's three minutes per citizen. Uh if you wish to address the board, now is your time to do it. You need to state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak.
Don't everybody rush up?
If there's, if there's no one to speak, we do have a closed session tonight pursuant to N C G S one forty three, that's three eighteen point eleven eight six. And at this time, I would entertain a motion that we go into closed session for that.
So may.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Yeah, y'all have session notes from to the middle here. I'll I'll provide the.